Good evening, I would like to welcome you to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, July the 16th, 2019. We welcome you here. We're glad to have you. Hope everyone is having a great summer. Hope you're staying cool somewhere. It's been pretty hot.
If you are, I'd like to know where that is.
Yeah, tell us so we can join you there. But as we normally do, we will start in just a minute with a moment of silence and we will remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. And please, when we go to our moment of silence, please keep in your thoughts and prayers that we had someone killed this morning on Highway 321, a pedestrian accident, and we're so very sorry that that happened. Don't know all the details of that yet. We're still putting all that together, but we are always sorry to hear things like that. So please keep those gentlemen and the family, when we find out all that, in your thoughts and prayers as we go to this time. But I always hate for things like that to happen. And if you don't mind, please join us now for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As we get started this evening, I would, first of all, like to say a very special thank you to all our great department heads and departments and the Chamber of Commerce and everybody for a great 18th BlackBerry Festival that was held this past weekend in Lenore, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Great events. It was warm, but it was still done very well. We had 130, 40 vendors here in our community. We had people from all over the United States that came and visited with us, and we're still putting all those figures together. But we thank you for all, for all that you did to put it together, for protection from our police and fire, public works, and our downtown Main Street and recreation and everybody for all that you did for making it such a special event again and showcasing Lenore and Caldwell County that we are so very proud of. So thanks for that. And at this time, I'd like to recognize the Executive Director of our Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Brian Moore. Brian, I think, and Becky...
Becky Warren.
Becky Warren. Thank you, Becky. And they are here to, I think, to present a few special things.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, Distinguished Council Members, Mr. Attorney. Thank you, and audience. We're glad to be here. It was a fantastic festival. And like you said, Mayor, this cannot be done without the help of so many people. And our partnership with the City of Lenore is extremely beneficial to pull off this festival, for all the volunteer hours and the time and the department heads that were able to put things together. Becky is our event director and has helped coordinate and manage many parts of this with our city staff and partners. And we just wanted to take a minute and publicly recognize some very specific departments that did over and above the call of duty to help make sure the BlackBerry Festival was great. So if I could get Kenny Story to come up, Kalen Horn, Chief Phelps, Chief Hare, and Jared Wright to come up real quick. We've got a quick little presentation for all of you. I'll let you hand that out to everybody. Chief Phelps will make you go last.
Not the least.
That's right. So we have a beautiful plaque to present to each of these departments from the BlackBerry Festival, and it's our certificate of appreciation. It is presented to each individual department, and it is proclaimed as, "For your entire departments, every person, and their support and care for the vendors, residents, volunteers, staff, guests, and events associated with the 18th Annual BlackBerry Festival. Without your time and dedication to this festival, it truly would not happen. We appreciate you from the bottom of our hearts and thank you for your support." Signed, all of your Chamber of Commerce staff members, myself, Becky, Faith, and our new Hall of Fame member, Libby Killian. So thank you very much.
Had to go into stealth mode.
While those guys are going back and everybody's sitting down, I've got to give props to the Chamber of Commerce. I know firsthand how hard these guys have worked. Becky, fabulous job of being the Events Coordinator. Brian, killing it being on the job for three months. Libby, Faith, just a fantastic group, all the volunteers that helped out. You guys did a great, great, great job. And it was, I think, BlackBerry Festival is the North Carolina BlackBerry Festival, and it takes a team. So thank you guys very much for all your hard work. And of course, Team Lenore, you guys rock it out every time. So just hats off to all you guys.
That's coming from the Chairman of the Chamber of Commerce Board, by the way. So he's right in the heart of it, so he knows what's going on. But again, thank you, Brian, Becky, and for what you did. It was a great, great weekend. We appreciate all the hard work. We fought through the rain and all the things that were threatening, moved the thing on Thursday night from downtown to the Civic Center, and it felt like you didn't even miss a beat. So it all worked out really well. And so great planning and great pulling everything off together. So thank you for that. We're proud to be a part of it. Before I move on to our special recognition, I would like to recognize Chief Phelps, who has been, had gone to the Public Executive Leadership Academy, the PELA, as we call it, and he has finished his first week of it. Still has a week to go.
Just graduate.
Yeah.
Just graduate.
Just to graduate, but we appreciate that, Chief. And I know that's a great course. I know many of our other leaders, including our City Manager, have been through this training. And it's, I know, it takes work, and we appreciate you taking that time to get that extra, extra things that it takes to be a leader in the department. So thanks for that. Very proud for what you're doing. So. And next, we have a special recognition, and I would like to recognize our American Legion Post Number 29, who we have several members here tonight. I'm going to call Mr. Irv Erto, the First Vice Commander of Post 29, and he's going to recognize tonight a Firefighter of the Year and the Police Officer of the Year for the City of Lenore as selected by that post. And Irv, if you will, I'll let you introduce the gentleman that are with you, if you will. Thank you, you're welcome.
Well, I'll correct the agenda, though. I used to be the First Vice Commander.
Okay.
Now I am no longer the First Vice Commander.
Okay.
All right. We had an annual election. I chose not to run. So I would like to introduce the current First Vice Commander, Henry Woody Smith, and our Post Adjutant, Mike Miesak, and our Finance Officer, Terry Milton.
Yes.
And...
And we know the Commander is the Honorable Bill Murray, so we're...
It is. It is.
Glad to have Bill.
And his right hand now is going to be Woody Smith, who was the Post Commander three years ago, and he's the one who kind of instituted this program for our post, to recognize the Police Officer of the Year, Firefighter of the Year, and EMT of the county each year. And we rely on the department heads or however they determine who those people are going to be. So first, we're going to do the Police Officer of the Year. So I'm going to ask Terry Milton to come up, and with Chief Phelps and Sergeant Howard come up.
I would like to present, from the American Legion Post 29, the 29th Police Department Officer of the Year, Sergeant John Howard.
Just to give the council a touch of background...
Yeah, don't go away.
When we were asked, it's difficult to select one person when our men and women are doing so many different things across the city. But in looking at it, we chose Sergeant John Howard for his extensive work in the opioid conspiracy case that we had had going on for over two years. Just a little bit of info about that. That investigation, there were seven total people that were charged. One of them pled guilty in federal prison. The charges ranged from second-degree murder, obstruction of justice, conspiracy to traffic heroin, conspiracy to traffic meth, and conspiracy to sell and deliver Schedule I. There was over 20 interviews during the year and a half investigation. The best we can calculate on the probably light side, about 1,500 hours that Sergeant Howard alone put in, in a little over a year in this investigation. You know, it's bittersweet, sitting in the courtroom when that was going on. You know, there was people that had lost a loved one. And it's a very sad event. It is going on across our country. But I am proud of the work that Sergeant Howard put in and the other men and women at our department for our community here. Congratulations.
Just don't leave the building, that's all. All right, and Commander, First Vice Commander Woody Smith is going to present the Firefighter of the Year Award. And the recipient couldn't be here, but Chief Ken Harris is going to accept it for him and have a couple of comments.
This is presented to Chaplain Jason Hines, and this represents the Fire Department itself. The Fire Department and the Police Department here are unbelievable. They help us in everything. They're on the street all the time. They're here at night. And any time we call them, they're helping us to send everything up downtown. They're sending off the Fire Department agents.
Thanks, sir. Counsel, Mr. Hines wanted to apologize for not being able to be here, but vacation was scheduled and his wife said, you know.
We understand.
But he did want to let the Legion know how honored and privileged he was to receive this award and what you gentlemen do for our community, and he wanted to thank you for your service. And just a little bit about Hines, just like Chief Phelps said, this is very hard to pick one person out of our department. And we all have the Team Lenore concept. But Mr. Hines has come to us as a public educator. He was an educator for 17 years, and we were blessed enough to hire him as a firefighter. And he truly epitomizes what a selfless public servant is. He does a lot of everything. He works anything we need to do. We lost our chaplain through retirement earlier this year, and he voluntarily chose to do that, as he is an ordained chaplain. So he does that. He has mentored a lot of our youth. He does everything that we can ask him to do, and he wants to do more for our city. But not only our city, he volunteers at the Sawmill Fire Department and has there for several years, and also serves as their chaplain. And the gentleman also serves as the, one of the chaplains at the Sheriff's Department. So he is everywhere. We've asked him to come assist sometimes when PD is out with things. This gentleman absolutely, truly deserves this award, and I am proud to receive it on his behalf. So just want to say thank you.
We were going to present a plaque to the EMT of the Year, but the, they've been so busy down there with all the stuff from the storms and the rain that we kind of slid down their priority list, and I decided I'd stop, I'd stop bugging Eddie Anderson too much before I mad him or something. So I guess we're going to take a picture of everybody up here.
Yeah, good everybody, please. Thank you all again. Thank you, American Legion Post 29, for this great program that you have put together for now, is this our second year, third year maybe? We've done this maybe three, three years, I think. So thank you all for what you do. We enjoy our partnership with our Legion Post here. And certainly thank you, our Police and Fire Sergeant Howard and Firefighter Chaplain Hines for their hard work. And thank you for you guys for recognizing them for what they do. So thank you, and we look forward to next year, another great, great presentations. Okay, we'll move on then to matters scheduled for public hearing this evening. We have a rezoning request. This is for Summit Place Southwest. We'll hold this hearing to consider a rezoning request for 13 lots located on Summit Place from R-15, which is low-density single-family, to R-12, which is medium-density single-family, to facilitate a minor subdivision and house construction at 1248 Norwood Street Southwest without creating a spot zone. Based on the following consistency statement, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan because it establishes zoning that is more consistent with the adopted future land use map designating the area to remain medium-density residential and better matches the existing development pattern. This will ensure fair and efficient growth, reduce nonconformities, and establish sensible, straightforward zoning standards. The proposed amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it promotes infield development at appropriate densities, making more efficient use of the city's existing infrastructure investments while creating opportunities for affordable housing for people in all stages of life. I will open the public hearing at this time, and I will recognize our Director of Planning, Jenny Wheelock, who has some little presentation to do for us about this situation.
Thank you. Hopefully, just very quickly. It's a little bit different than our normal requests because it started off as a request to rezone one lot, which would have resulted in a spot zone, which isn't illegal but generally frowned upon because you don't want, that's really not how zoning works, assigning one zone to one property. So I wanted to sort of walk you through the evolution here. So on the left, you have the subject property at 1248 Norwood Street. The owner of that property is in the audience today and is the applicant for this request. And on the right-hand side, you have Summit Place, which actually shows the boundaries of what staff is recommending that you rezone and what Planning Board recommends you rezone and the way that we advertised and noticed for tonight's hearing. So the current zoning is all R-15, which is a low-density, single-family district. It's one of the lowest-density districts that we have in the city. The proposed zoning doesn't change much. It's proposing to move to R-12, which is just kind of one step more intense than R-15. Still a single-family zoning district, medium-density. There's a difference. Basically, the difference is R-15 requires minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. That's about a third of an acre of lots. And it requires 15-foot side setbacks. The R-12 medium-density allows slightly higher densities, so it's about quarter-acre lots with 12,000 square feet. And the side setbacks are just a little narrower. You fit a few more houses in the same amount of land. Front setbacks are the same. The minimum lot frontage sizes are the same. There is a couple of more intense uses allowed through conditional use permits in R-12. You could potentially do something like a duplex or a townhome. But since this is a built-out street, it's not very likely that that would be, come to fruition here on this street. So we're really looking at that lot size. And the request is to facilitate a lot split on the applicant's property, the property there at 1248 Norwood Street, so that two houses can be constructed where, that are served by that existing infrastructure instead of limiting that to one house. And when we started doing the analysis to kind of say, does this make sense or not, you know, you don't want to stick infield development in a community that's really out of pace with the rest of the street pattern. We started analyzing it, and we realized that under R-15 zoning, which 100% of these structures developed prior to the adoption of the zoning, right? This was zoning that was applied after the street built out. 70% of the lots are too small to be plotted today under R-15. If you change the zoning to R-12, you reduce that number to 43% of the lots. So our goal really isn't to make these conforming lots. Their grandfather, the owners of these lots have rights to use them and continue to use them. If a house was to burn down, they can rebuild. But it's really more about sort of an equity standard. We didn't recommend anything more intense than R-12 because you start to introduce permitted uses like double-wide manufactured homes, some permitted multifamily, and that just really kind of starts to change the character. So we're kind of trying to make the least change to kind of correct the map and allow the applicant to be able to do what he's looking to do, which is construct two new houses, which is a good thing for our tax base and our existing infrastructure investments there because we don't have to build any new infrastructure or maintain any new infrastructure. We get a couple new houses, which we all know we are really, really needing new residential construction in the city. So I think this is a good thing. Worth noting, three of those lots, they're labeled three, four, and five on that map. They're too small to exist in any zoning district today, right? So we're not fixing things. This is a great little street. The neighbors we've talked to love their street, and they're mostly concerned that they don't want it to change. And I don't think this really does change anything. We did analyze, and I apologize, it's very hard to see, hopefully on your screens. It's showing up a little bit better. This is in the staff report as well. We can't condition a rezoning. So it's really up to the property owner, if we approve this, which direction they split the lot. They could, he could create two lots that face Summit or two lots that face Norwood. We looked at both options just to see, you know, is it going to be real weird as far as the pattern of the street? It's really consistent with what's out there, no matter which way we go. So I think that is another thing that staff's very comfortable with, either direction. I believe the intent of the applicant is to split the lots to face Norwood Street. But that would be up to him and all the existing regulations, should you approve this. And I guess the only other thing that's really worth noting is that we're just a couple of, you know, square feet shy of being able to do this under the existing zoning as far as fitting those two lots. He just doesn't have 30,000 square feet to meet that R-15 minimum standard. And that, again, is the consistency statement. You know, that's a statutory requirement that when you do a rezoning, you adopt that. I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also in the audience, as well as the project planner Hannah Williams, who did all this GIS analysis. So she really did a great job on that.
Any questions of our Planning Director, Swielock? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we are in the public hearing. If there's anyone else who would like to address the council concerning this rezoning request, please do so. And seeing no one coming forward, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for any questions or motions or whatever you'd like to do.
I think it's very straightforward. It's in keeping with what we as a council identified as one of our greatest needs in the city, which is housing and new housing. And so I'm in favor of this. I hope you'll, you'll support it. I'll make a motion that we approve. It's been submitted by staff.
Okay. Have a motion from Councilmember Purdue to approve the rezoning request for these 13 lots on Summit Place. This will be from R-15 to R-12 as presented. Any other discussion, comments? If not, we'll call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. That carries unanimously. That would be five, zero tonight. Councilmember Thomas is out on vacation.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting that together. Thank you, Marcus, for being with us.
And thanks for building in the city.
Yes, right. Okay, we'll move on then to consent agenda items tonight, consisting of minutes from our City Council Meeting of Tuesday, June 18th, 2019, and minutes from our committee, the whole meeting of Tuesday, June 25th, 2019, both as submitted. I will open that for any discussion and/or motions on our consent agenda. Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Have a motion from Councilmember Stevens to approve the consent agenda items A and B as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. unanimously. We'll now move on to requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone who would like to address the council at this time, most everybody, I think, is, has different points on the agenda, and our staff is here. So seeing no one at this time, we do not have any reports of our boards and commissions this evening. So we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the City Manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Good evening. Mayor, council tonight, just a couple of items for information. The first is Lenora Tourism and Development Authority will meet on Thursday, July 18th at 4:00. And that meeting's going to be held at the New Hampton Inn located on Wilkesboro Boulevard. The Lenora Business Advisory Board will meet on Thursday, July 18th at 6:00 PM, and that will be held, Third Floor City Hall. On July 20th, on Saturday, we'll be having fabulous film night with the movie Lego 2, and that begins at 8:30 on the square. The Committee of the Whole Meeting for the month of July has been canceled, and the next Committee of the Whole Meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 27th, 8:30 City Hall. Summer Music Madness Concert scheduled for Friday, July 26th, and the band Lucky Pocket will be playing on the square beginning at 7:00 and going to 10:00 PM that evening. And then the Fourth Annual Community Music Festival scheduled for Saturday, July 27th, from 6:00 to 11:00 PM at MLK Center, and the public's invited to attend that event. And lastly, I have the Annual Harambee Festival will begin on Saturday, August 3rd, and run through Friday, August 9th. And all those events are held at the Martin Luther King Center. Activities will be scheduled throughout the week, and those items can be found online at citylenore.com. And again, the public's encouraged to attend those events. And that's all I have this evening.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Hildebrand? The Harambee Festival, is it our oldest running festival, continuous? The story, you know how long? I'm trying to remember.
Long time.
Long time. Been many years. I can't remember now exactly, but we'll get that information.
Before my time.
But if you haven't attended some of those events, they aren't... Yeah, Ike was probably at the first one, I'm sure. You may have started that.
Before my time.
But if you haven't attended, those are great events. And I know there's a basketball game. It's always a lot of fun. And the Community Family Day is usually the first weekend, and that's a lot of fun. Great food up there.
Forty-seventh annual.
Forty-seventh annual. There we go. The man who knows how to use his phone over here got me to all this information quickly. So we appreciate that. But I hope you'll try to attend those events. We'll move on then to any report and recommendations of our City Attorney, Mr. Rohr.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate all you're doing and keeping us straight, and good things have been there. All right, we'll move into, I do have a couple of announcements to make for some considerations for reappointments to our cities, authorities, and boards and commissions. To the Planning Board, I'll recommend to you in a couple of weeks, Mr. Jeff Church to be reappointed. To our ABC Board, Mr. Jerry Brooks, and Jerry is the Chairman of that board, does a great job and has been with it a good little bit. We appreciate his work. And to our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Mr. Rick Pierce. These names will be placed on our August 6th City Council Agenda for your consideration. I have talked with all of them. They all would like to continue their service, and we certainly appreciate them being a part of these boards and their consistency of working with us on what they do. We are very blessed with great boards in our city, that people who really work hard and enjoy being a part of it and give a lot of their time and efforts to the many boards that we have. So keep those names in your consideration. We'll move on then to our, anything from our council members tonight. Gosh, nobody. Okay, there's nothing to come up. We will, we do have a closed session tonight. This is pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, Point 11, Subsection A, Subsection 4, and we'll enter into this closed session to discuss economic development. No action will be coming out of this closed session. Need a motion to go into closed session?
Send it on.
Motion from Mayor... Motion from Mayor Pro Tim Willis to go into closed session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. We're in closed session, and if you're leaving, if you're gone when we come out, thank you for being with us this evening. We certainly do appreciate that.